We're going to call the meeting to order. My name is Mary Vogel and I am with Tom Clark. And we're going to ask everybody to stand and pledge allegiance to the House, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. The Constitution of the United States of America.
So the purpose of this meeting tonight, the special town meeting regarding the moratorium. So towards this stage, we'll have the first order of business. It's going to be the election of moderator, which will be done by written ballot. I'll accept nominations. We only need three votes. Does not matter on the number of people in attendance. So do I have a nomination for moderator?
Make the motion of nominating Jay Bradshaw as the moderator for the special town meeting.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations for moderator? That is closed. Is there anybody that would like to vote on that? We've got three up here. Four. Jay won by a landslide. And so following the election of the moderator, Jay Bradshaw has won that. So we're going to swear Jay into the moderator position and then he'll give you additional information and instructions. And I, please state your name. To swear.
Sure.
That I support the Constitution of the United States. Along with my health insurance. That I would faithfully discharge to best my abilities. As moderator of the special town meeting. For the Constitution of the State.
Thank you all for being here. It's wonderful to see so many people out on my street. The first thing I'd like to do is point out where the emergency exits are. Hopefully they're muted, but there's a set of doors there. There's a rear door of these doors as well. I would also ask our unanimous consent to adopt the main moderator's manual 2021. It was amended by main law to guide the moderator in the conduct of this meeting. There's no objection, we will adopt that as a rule of business. Who would ask, if you've got a cellphone, please turn it off. You should have all been given voting power. I got you two pieces of paper. Please, when it comes time to vote, we'll use that. And it's up to me, I suppose, like easily see how the votes are shown. I just want to point out, for those of you who may not have been to one of our town meetings, we've actually had one a couple of years now. The purpose of this is to discuss. Public warrants. So everybody has a long history of meetings that lost spirit at times in polite and civil. Differences of opinion are welcome and solicited. However, interruptions and personal attacks are not appropriate and out of respect for all of them on this holiday. Speakers are asked to be mindful of those present and to respect their time. Toward that goal, please keep your comments and questions the same. In order to speak, one must first be recognized by the moderator. If there are several people interested in speaking, the moderator may recognize others before allowing a person to speak again on the same article. All questions and responses must be directed to the moderator. The process we will go through is that I will read the article. It needs to be read, then moved and seconded, and then it's open for discussion. That discussion will continue until all have had their say, or until there's a motion to close the discussion and vote on it. If there is such a motion, it does not allow for discussion. If there's a motion to proceed with the vote, that needs a second, but it's not seconded for discussion. And if two-thirds of you who are present vote to suspend the discussion, that's what will happen when we proceed with the vote. So the article is to see if the town will approve a moratorium ordinance regarding commercial solar facilities, commercial wind energy facilities, telecommunications towers, and subdivisions effective from November 5th, 2021 to May 5th, 2022. Motion and seconded?
Make that motion.
Seconded. They're moved and seconded. Before I open it up for discussion, I want to call on Peter Rush, who's the chair of our planning board. I do also want to point out that just for purpose of clarification, the purpose of tonight's meeting is purely to vote on the extension of the moratorium. It is not to discuss the merits or advantages or disadvantages, or whatever, of cell towers, wind energy facilities, subdivisions, et cetera. That will come at a different time. Our task tonight is to vote on, show the moratorium to be extended. Just so happy answering questions about that. Call on Peter to just explain what got us here and why this is the force tonight.
Good evening, everybody. As Jay pointed out, the planning board was tasked with doing some work on some revisions on the current ordinance that we're talking about. A big part of that had to do with the solar farm part, where there was a lot of discussion about how to best manage regulation in the ordinance. So far, we've come up with some language that would be applicable. And we presented that information. It had to do with decommissioning solar farms. But that's just one aspect of what we worked, that we're trying to do. We presented that information back to the select persons. And the feedback that we got is that we'd like to see a little bit more work, actually a lot more work on this. And as a result, we would like to take that on. In order to do so, it does require more time and more work. So while that happens, while that revision work happens, we'd like to make sure this moratorium is in place to protect it. And is it in motion? If that helps.
Is there anyone that would like to state on this article?
I am Jason from West Gartner. No.
In that case, you can vote on whether you get to speak. Want to try that? Want to try something?
So the, I just don't understand. I'm having a difficult time reconciling why there would be cell towers, solar farms, and decommissioning thereof, and other powers, larger scale programs are much different from a, from the, from a developmental standpoint. It just seems to me like, I can't understand why there would be the development, like if I have a subdivision that I wish to develop, why would that be slowed? Why would that continue to be caught in this mix of this particular moratorium, I guess, where I'm going with that?
We can start. So Anthony, maybe we can kind of tag team this one. We're talking about commercial development, few ordinance.
Yeah.
And not subdivision.
No, we are talking about the subdivision ordinance as well as part of this moratorium. So Jason, the subdivision ordinance was originally crafted in 1988 and is wildly outdated compared to state statute. And so, and so the planning board is in the final stages of putting the final touches on a 95-page document that will be presented to voters at town meeting. So they've got a few touch-ups to make on that. It needs to undergo a legal review by the town's attorney. Then we're going to present it to the voters. So in order to ensure that we're not approving ordinances under an outdated set of rules, that's why we want to extend the moratorium to not only address cell towers, wind farms, and solar farms, but subdivisions as well.
Let me just, I need to go around and I'll come back. Well, I have a follow-up, that's what it is. Okay, so, so the, I guess, if it's outdated, if it's as old and outdated as he suggested it is, why at this point have we not provided an update to it? And why are we slowing that potential? Why are we allowing that to become a burden for other, you know, residential development? How do we get to this point, I guess, where we're not? And how long has this been part of this, this moratorium, from what I understand it? It's been, this is a couple of years old now, is it?
No, it's one year old.
Okay, and then so in one year, we didn't, so we just weren't able to get the residential part of that up and running, even though it's been outdated since.
Well, I think what we're not here to do is to look backwards to find fault.
Yeah.
Where we are is, we're at a point where, as Anthony just explained, that the document is outdated, that they're working to update. It isn't, it isn't ready for prime time yet.
Right. I just wanted to try to understand that, that helps me to understand where we're at.
Okay, the reason why, I'm Craig Alexander, I'm on the planning board. The reason why we missed our window on the subdivision ordinance is because once it was made, then our original draft was made, well then, you know, people started speaking up and they wanted changes. And that also reflected in the public hearing. People still want changes made. So what we presented as a draft, people want changes. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to try to get these changes done in a short time, so it's ready for the town meeting. And so basically, that's why we want another 180 days on the subdivision. Trust me, I want to build it too, I understand. But it's actually the right thing to do, so we can make these changes to better suit the people in Congress that are asking for these changes.
Mr. Moderator, just so everyone knows, at the same time that the planning board was working on this 100-page document, they were also having to hear permit applications at the same time. So that obviously slowed that process down. And if the voters were to approve this document at town meeting, the moratorium, as it relates to subdivisions, would then be lifted. So even though Craig said, and he's correct, this would be a 180-day moratorium, when that ordinance passes, the moratorium's lifted.
Are there other questions or comments? Say none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the question as good, please so indicate by raising your ticket. And those opposed, approve Article 1. And that concludes our business. This is going to go on record as the shortest time meeting. Thank you all for coming. With that, I would accept the motion to withdraw.
See you, Anthony.
You too. Hope you had fun watching this. I got hit down the floor.
Yeah. Get down at the end of the year. I really did. Just to slash people. I was watching some of this.
All right, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, this is the select board meeting is now open. First part of our meeting is public comment, so that's the spot where if you folks have anything that you would like to bring to the select board's attention, it may or may not be covered on the seating agenda. It may not be. This is the part where you bring it forward to the board. Sometimes there are issues that folks have that we aren't aware of. That's the best way we can get those in front of the board. That being said, so anyone here who has something that they would like to bring to the board. Next up, we have board business. First up is the approval of the November 9, 2021 select meeting minutes. Take a motion. Second, that's open for discussion. All right, Rick, did you have anything? No, you're good. All right, Ricky, what's your pleasure?
Glad to hear you guys again. Even during that meeting was. I've turned my belt on up as high as it'll go.
You turned it up if I do that, okay. So, Ricky, are you okay with approval of the November 9 meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Carol? Five yeses. Can you hear me any better, Ricky, if I use my big voice?
Yes.
Use my scolding voice. All right, next up, I'm going to take a motion to table the discussion and consideration of the public water system to the end of the meeting. Reason is, while the select board typically allows public comment on most agenda items, it is not required unless we're engaged in a public hearing. For this particular item, it's important that the select board members are able to engage in a focused conversation with one another and will represent their duty. There will be opportunities for the public to add a comment at a future meeting. We appreciate the patience and the consideration. Needing a second to move that item to the end of the meeting. Ricky, what's your pleasure on that?
Yep, that was from the attorney, is that correct?
No, that's from us. We don't have the town. Session, we're just moving the item a little further down in the meeting.
All right, that's fine. We're going to move it down. Yes.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have discussion and consideration of the committee. With the policy, take a motion, open that item. Move me outside and then that item is open for discussion. So, the town manager put together a policy kind of incorporating everyone's ideas. We have a suggestion from the budget committee chair, Gary Mala, which was select board receipt though, so November 9 even, the new language was underscored. And the select board where we adopt this policy, vacancies will be promoted on the town's website, on its Facebook page, on the court board, and the town office, festival, and on one of the town marquees. Many vacancies have also been promoted in recent editions of the town's newsletter, which are produced for your board chats preview. We currently have openings on, so anybody who is willing to serve, take note. We have one seat open, it's an alternate position for the board of appeals. We have one open on for assessment review, one seat open on the budget committee, one seat committee, two seats open on the roads committee, five on the woods park, parks and recreation, and one alternate seat open on the planning. So, the committee application policy that's before us. As vacancies on town boards and committees will be promoted for a minimum of two weeks during which time applications to serve will be accepted. Means of promoting the vacancy will include and not be limited to posting on the town's website and on its Facebook page. First down on the court boards and the town office and in any other appropriate town facility. Examples, the library, the center for all seasons, on the marquees of the town office and any other appropriate facility, depending on the timing of the vacancy in the town website. After the two week period, the applications received will be forwarded to the board of committee for its review and recommendation to the board select persons. The select board will, at its next available meeting, consider the committee's recommendation. The select board reserves the right to decline, to approve an appointment. Should a vacancy continue, the open work vacancy will continue to be promoted until the select board president appoints and appointee. If adopted, this policy will be adopted on November 16, 2021, and no break for select persons. It's now open for discussion.
I just want to let you guys know my experience currently around in the village dam down here. So, back when I first started getting interested well, start knowing what was going on and stuff. The chair and Kevin and I, we didn't see eye to eye. Actually, we went at it quite a bit. I was the one paying attention. I was the one with passionate, passion of the dam and the water and all that stuff. So, when that time put an application in, I was the first one to put an application in. Well, him and I, we didn't like each other. Why, why? It was the old boys club. I didn't like the way it was being run. So, you know, I was backing up my stance by applying to the dams committee. So, I was first to apply. Well, he went out and got somebody else to apply. And that's who he presented to the dams committee because he didn't like me. I didn't like him. So, if you're going to be doing this, you're taking away from the person that has the passion. They're taking away from the person that's paying attention and possibly giving it to somebody who doesn't even care until somebody brings it up to them. Oh, why don't you run on the damn thing? So, that's an awesome way to staff a committee. That's just my experience. I had to go in front of the select board and fight for my right to be the first chosen. You know, and I stuck with it because that's that's my delight. You know, that's what I grew up here. You know, that's the committee that I'll be on for the whole. So, you know, by doing that, you're allowing people that haven't even thought about it, haven't even been paying attention until somebody brings it up to them. So, the person that cares, you may be overlooking. You know, can you adjust it, like, give a two week timeframe? If no one applies? Or, I mean, how houses work, yeah, so give like a two week timeframe. And if no one gets their application in there first, then stop advertising it. And start going from there.
So, do you think, Craig, if we did a two week timeframe for accepting applications, then the committees have a chance to review? Like, the whole committee, not just the chairperson of the committee, but the whole committee as a group?
You're standing a chance to, you know. If, if you're choosing from multiple people, that's the way to stack the committee. Because if they're all leaning one way, they're going to pick somebody else's thinking the same way. They won't pick the person that's going against. We've time frame and there's no applications put in.
How will folks know that there is?
They're going to be paying attention and if they're passionate about it or if they're interested in about it, they're going to apply. If not, then advertise it, see who can get.
So, well, is there anybody here who knew there were five seats open on the board parks and recreation?
I knew there was boards, yeah. And I know there's some coming up on other committees too.
So, I think sometimes what happens is that some of the boards and committees are stacked. Lewis, I don't know if does everybody, you know, maybe not read the side thing. We're just trying to come up with something so that we can tell people there are spots available. And, and I've said over and over again for millions of years, it takes a village to lose town. So, how do we get the information up to the village?
So, give it two weeks and then get it out there. Those positions have been open for a long time. We could be advertising. You know, but don't take away from the person that's interested. You know, give them the first chance. The person paying attention, because if no one's out there paying attention, they don't care.
Well, I don't know about that. First time I sat here, I think I was.
And you still can advertise, I still do, but first, first, you know, especially like the boards, the board of parks, ranch, you have five votes. You advertise it, boom, boom, you know, first, first come, first served on it. You know, I'm saying words, Craig, I mean, if people are passionate about, they're going to, you know, they listen to the board, you know, support or go through the board minutes to see that, you know, hey, it's open and coming up on this committee. But I guess it's, it's a way. If you change how it's going now, there's a way for boards and committees to get stacked. Or somebody on a committee has an agenda they want to pass and they're going to try to stack that committee for that. It happens in other towns. I mean, I don't know how the other towns around are doing this, if they, if they, you know, do it first come, first served. But it's always how it's been in this town, and I just think that's how it should stay. I, I mean, if something is not broken, why, why try to, you know, make it broken?
There's never been, there's never been a stated policy that it's first come, first served. And what I heard that last week at the select board meeting, and I was just astounded. You know, I was on the library board for five years and I had no idea that there was this first come, first served, you know, we.
But, but the, on the other hand, I heard you guys as a board say, for instance, I have no, no education and no knowledge about a library. Okay, but I'm going to say I want to be interested and I want to be on the library committee. But you, if there's three people that go and it's two openings and two people have knowledge about the library and this and that, but I was the first one to put an application in. I will be denied that, and you guys said that as, you know, as you guys on the board said at the last meeting.
Not necessarily. I mean, if you're an avid reader, if you love the library, that would certainly be a consideration.
But you guys said if you had yet, if you guys would choose somebody with the educational, but you know, it's right here on public, public. You guys said that at the last meeting. That right there puts a person like me and Craig right down the tubes.
As a small business, you have great budget experience. So, that's the news now on budget.
Right, but I mean, you know, I've been, I'm, I was born in this town, been here all my life, you know. And I've been working my way into these committees and stuff, I mean, for years, it was kind of too, no, no. You know, and I finally got my foot in, you know. But it's, you know, once you get in, you know, you've got to have a passion for it. And plus, I think if a person is the first one to be there to put their application in, they should be the first one considered. And then so on, so forth, if it's more, if it's more. I mean, I don't see there's any problem advertising. I don't. You just first come, first served, even when you're doing the advertising, if, you know.
See, and I guess Bruce, my hesitation with that is if we say it first come, first served, you're going to turn an application in. I work all the time, town offices open. I can't get here to get an application at the beginning of the opening. Sometimes I have Wednesdays off, sometimes I don't. So, allowing the opportunity as well for folks to get an application, and I think is imperative. We have, now we have a couple of different ways where you can get an application, because you can post that out online. But not everyone is tech savvy and can fill up an application online. So, I feel like my my wanting for us to get something down is more making sure that A, folks have a chance to know that there are positions open in town and that we welcome your application to those positions. And it may be that you really want to be on the border parks and recreation, and we have 10 applications that come in for that. And we have five seats. One of those folks says, you know, I'd also like to be considered for the appeal for, you know, another committee. Maybe what we have is we have a pool of interested citizens that are willing to serve on, on a committee that may, maybe wasn't their first choice. But maybe they, now that they know that they could put in an application, that there are these opportunities. That we have a pool of people that are interested in, in helping the town and volunteering and doing those things that keep us moving forward. I just don't want us to limit it to the first person who finds out that there is the availability.
So, what's wrong with the two week, three way, because the first person finding out there's ability is the person paying attention. So, that's who should be on the board. So, what's wrong with the two week layover? You know, it comes open, you don't get an application for two weeks, then you advertise it. What's wrong with that?
Well, I don't know if there's anything wrong with it, but I think I'd like to see two weeks to collect applications so that you have a chance to know that, that there's. You know, not everybody may have known, A, that Carol was on the budget committee. And by Carol getting a seat on the select board, she had to step down from the budget committee. So, now there's an opening, or in the last newsletter, there wasn't an opening on the budget committee.
Yeah, but people paying attention know that stuff.
You know, you talk about possibly stacking the board. I think it can work the other way as well. If you happen to have a chairperson that has an agenda and that person knows there's an opening coming, that person can call whoever they want to stack the board and say, get your application in here quickly. I mean, I, I just think that stacking a board can work both ways.
They don't always know somebody's sitting down and.
Usually the chairperson's aware, I, well, I say, I would think the chairperson would be aware.
So, with my situation, the chair wasn't aware because I was able to get an application in. I'm just talking from personal experience.
I understand.
Something could happen. I'm talking about what actually happened.
And I think, you know, I'm trying to make sure that stuff doesn't happen. That you get a chance to get the information out. We have more capability now to get information to folks than we ever have in the past. And COVID, they even do a lot of bad little things for us, but one thing it did was get people connected in a way electronically that they weren't connected before. Our Facebook page and our mailing's been a problem. Our website was kind of atrocious. So, even if you had gone to our website previously, it wasn't kept up to date and you wouldn't have known that there was an opening. So, we have more capability now to get the word. So, I just am hoping that we use that capability.
I just feel if they're not participating, then you know, somebody that is should be taken to the front. I would ask you guys to vote no on this.
My, my feelings are pretty much just automatically done first come, first served. If you have two people that decide they want to be on, say, the budget committee if it's only one of them. Let the first person be on the budget committee. Second person, you got your application, you get, oh, hold it, there's another opening. You can be first in line as the next person to go on it. If you don't, if there are some other openings, would you like to be on a different committee? But, I don't know. I think the first person chosen should be on the board.
That's exactly how I got on the budget committee. I put an application, those two was to put in, was Carol and I. Carol was first, Carol got on the budget committee. My application got held, when another position come open, then I got on the budget committee. That's how it should be. You hold that application for a year. And then if nobody, you know, that put an application back committee, if no other people get done, and then two years down the road, somebody does, then you have, you know. There's nothing wrong with advertising. I, I have nothing against advertising. I just think the first come, first served. I mean, that worked great, you know, Carol got it first, then when another position come, I got it, that worked great. And that's how it's always worked, and I, you know, it worked that way in the cemetery. I mean, it was, I had my application in like for three years before I got on the cemetery committee. You know, and kept doing it year after year. And finally, when there was an open, I got off.
I have a question just concerning this language in the second paragraph. That if we, if we do adopt this, it says the applications received, after the two period, the applications received will be for the two board committee for its review and recommendation with no timeframe. So, is there any sense of urgency cannot wait until the next meeting, because many of the committees just meet once a month? Do you mean? Can you hear about expediting this or no?
So, the applications will be forwarded to the board for review at its next meeting. So, it could be a month or six weeks until. So, there's going to be a motion. Just a clarification before it's the board of committee for its review at its next meeting. And if there was an urgency, they could always call a special meeting to discuss it. If that board had something that they wanted to have done, you can call a special meeting to discuss who you're going to direct them. Knowing that it may not get through by court, but first. So, we'll change or redirect the two period, the applications received will be forwarded to the board committee for its review at its next meeting. Recommendations to the board. That's next meeting day. Subsequent recommendations to the board select persons. Or maybe just for review at its next meeting. For review. So, there's no further discussion. I'm going to, I'm going to read how this. So, the town board committee application policy, this is our town boards, committees to report on two weeks during which applications to serve will be accepted. Means of marketing vacancies will include and not be limited to posting on the town's website and on its Facebook page. Posting on the court boards of the town office and in any other appropriate town facility. We also mentioned that we have examples, library center for all seasons, and we have the North Gregory Center. On the marquees of the town office and any other appropriate facility, and depending on the timing of the vacancy in the town newsletter. After the two week period, the applications received will be forwarded to the board committee for review at its next meeting. And recommendation will be presented. Or recommendation, recommendation, and recommendation to board select persons. The select board will, next available meeting, consider the committee's recommendation. The select board preserves the right to the right to the appointment. Should a vacancy continue, the board committee will continue to promote it until the select board approves an appointee. All right, so that's how that meets now. Take a vote. Barbara? Sorry.
This one I've asked, have you had any positive input on this? Because I watched last, maybe it's last select board meeting. And now again, on this select board meeting, you're not getting positive feedback from the citizens. So, just keep that in mind when you got, because it seems like it's driven from up there. And no one's been positive about it. No one that's involved anyways on this app, in the application app, no one's you know, been positive about it. So, I'm saying.
Ricky?
So, so just a point of order, we didn't actually have a motion in a second. To approve the language that you just read.
Now we're approving the language.
Now we're approving the language.
Yes. Ricky? Just approving the language. Just approving the language.
No.
Okay, Dan?
No.
And Carol?
Yes.
So we can remove the language. Now we'll take a motion on adoption of policy. Yes, Ricky?
Are we back to voting on the, the way it's written? On the, on, on the policy, what? It, I can't hear you guys. I don't know what is going on. But I've even put headphones on. It's muffled, bad.
Wait, wait, the mic's further away than it normally is.
Maybe that sound system that we have, maybe, I wonder if we can institute that as a way for us to be able to do that.
I don't know. It's been this way since we went with this deal. And it really, I mean, some people you can hear real good. You guys down, sitting at the board, you cannot hear. It's muffled, oh, bad.
Someone who also just came in that says it's muffled to me also.
All right, so what was the question?
The question is adopting the policy.
No, I'm not gonna adopt. No.
Carol? Yes. Dan? Send this. New business, consideration of appointments. Take a motion with that item. First, we have Sue Branchoff, a new application for the senior resources committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll sign that. And Sue, this is a power of push-up.
Okay. I'm ready. From a very young age, I've been interested in older people, both visiting them and supporting them and helping them. And the reality is, we're going to all be there someday. So it, it has become a lifelong goal to support and help older people.
Wasn't because Mary, Mary called you up? She did some arm twisting. Did you come in a registering car and you ended up?
No. No, when I realized there was an opening, I put my application in. No arm twisting by anyone.
All right, so anybody else have questions for Sue? Saying, Ricky?
Yes.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
All right, five yeses.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Now, that being said, how many, how many spots are open on senior resources committee?
That's ten, and I have four ex-official members, so basically members that aren't Belgrade residents.
Okay, so on this committee application, so senior resources committee will need to add to that. And then, so you have, do you have positions open for alternates?
No, we don't have any alternates. No, we have ten positions and then the ex-official for those, and we're full.
Okay.
So no openings.
So from this point on, it would go the same two week advertisement.
No use.
All right, next up, we have discussion and consideration of designating the North Belgrade Community Center as the senior center. Take a motion with that item. So move it.
Do you want me to take it?
You go, girl.
Okay, all right. So I can read down for it either way. I'm assuming that you've all read it. The senior resource committee would like to request that the board officially designate the North Belgrade Community Center as the town's senior center. This will assist us in applying for grant opportunities and to help support all of our endeavors. We have a fairly active group, and we have a lot of good ideas. Some of the reasons for the town designating the center is currently underutilized, and it will provide the town with a visible value of that facility. So it'll provide space for seniors where they could gather for programming, personal growth classes, movement activities. You know, yoga for seniors, different things like that. And keeping seniors moving is part of our plan to, you know, keep seniors in our community and active, and just promoting healthy living for them. But, oh, more importantly than that, it provides them with the space that they could call their own. Some of the current activities that we have going, we've done the distribution of the file of life folders, which we receive those through a donation. We are currently distributing a survey to seniors. We had it at the craft show, and we plan on having it in different locations. We will have it up here for seniors to fill out, but this will help us to become part of ARP, which will further enhance our grant opportunities. So one of the things, we're actively seeking out volunteers to help with programming, because we realize the majority of the people on that committee are people that work. We do have a few that are retired, but we are going to be relying fairly happily, so we have put out a signup sheet for people to volunteer, which we also had at the craft fair and down, down in the village. We're working on, we have some interest in getting together a senior newsletter. One of our members wants to start to do a senior newsletter. We have some interest from another member who would like to do a Facebook page for Belgrade seniors on just advertising different resources and things, and she has a mother that needs some assistance, and she doesn't know where to look for things, and so we're hoping that that will provide. So I'm not sure if we have to go to the board for that to create a Facebook page for the senior resource committee. Okay, so that might be something that will be coming forward if we do. And we're working on revising the senior tri-fold. So it was, the question was posed to me today, do we intend to take over the North Belgrade Community Center? Absolutely not. We do not want to do that in any way, but we do want the space to be designated. Ideally, we'd like to get a closet up there, a locking closet, where they could put things like craft supplies, puzzles, cribbage boards, card games, things that, you know, a space that they can call their own, that they can go to. And we're going to rely heavily on volunteers to man those hours. You know, we want to do things like provide health days where we could have a P A come in or a nurse come in and do health screenings in different areas. You know, just doing different things for seniors right now. Tasha, who is my co-chair, and had to leave to pick up her son. We are doing the sand, sand buckets for seniors. So she's already purchased sand buckets and, and done that on her own. She, her father is filling those buckets, and they're delivering to people who have signed up. So we're fairly active, and we, you know, want to have a visible space in the community.
So remember one, I think, having a designated senior center, it's fantastic. It's something that we've talked about for years. The first thing that comes to mind is whether the programming would be under the board of recreation, since they have control of the North Belgrade Community Center. The secondary piece is if we have volunteers that are running organ programs. One of the things that we were trying to do was minimize the amount of people who have keys to the facilities. So we'd have to pull together a policy on how to get the key.
We had a policy in place that has fallen through the cracks, but there was a very good policy on the sign out of keys and return of keys. And so that could probably be reinstated, because it's not just for that facility, it's for other facilities as well. Who has keys and things? But no, we don't want to minimize in any way the activities of the recreation department and what they do. And I have talked to Anna about it. I talked quite heavily to Lily about this before she had left. And she actually, she thought it was a fantastic idea, and she put her backing behind it as far as, you know, designated that space, because she didn't feel that there was necessarily a space down there for seniors. But, you know, and I've talked to Anna a little bit about this, and we've talked about reinstating, there used to be a senior walk in the mornings around the gym, especially during the winter time, reinstating programs like that. So we don't want to take away from the center at all. We don't want to do any duplication at all. We want to combine our resources. So we would be working with Annie on that. Okay.
Mary, is the, is that weekly morning coffee time? Is that still ongoing?
So as far as I know, it's still ongoing down there, and I would, you know, Annie and I talked about that again just a short time ago before she got the job. And that isn't some, that was something that we felt should continue, because you have people in different areas. And in the winter time, it's very difficult for seniors to get into their vehicle and drive 10 miles. So, you know, it's our plan that they continue that and that she continue that. And is trying to get programming throughout the town for seniors. But designating that space will, will provide us more opportunity for grants and things. And all voices here too, and she is on like many, so sorry.
We said pretty much all that you need.
Did I say everything?
All right, so any further discussion? I'm just saying none. I'll take a motion. I move that we designate the North Belgrade Community Center as the town's senior center. Second. Ready for the discussion? All right, seeing none, Ricky?
Yes.
Yes, Carol?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All right, five yeses.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a discussion of short-term rentals. Take a motion with that item. Anthony, do you want to propose this?
Well, we had a request from one of our residents, Paul Lassar, to bring this idea before the board, and he's presented a wealth of information here that's all in your packet and in your background memo. So you want to turn the floor over, Mr. Lassar?
My wife and I live at the end of Pickle Lake, which is a short time road, which extends off of another private road. So we're kind of out of the lineup site. We are shore frontage on Belgrade Lake. So it's a, when we moved there, it's a nice retirement community. And that's pretty much the way that the road developed. It was summer residences, or there were permanent or year-round residents on the road. But times are changing. In the last 10 years, in my research, I found that land use, because of different things, and more recently, the last couple of years, because of the pandemic, properties have sold at a higher value. They have sold at a higher value for a couple of reasons. Not because the, there's a massive inflation of the real estate market, but because people are seeing the possibility of investing in the real estate and turning it into short-term rentals. And short-term rentals, it all depends on how you look at it, what it's called. If you were to do a search on Google for short-term rentals in Belgrade, I, I did that this afternoon. I came up with 125 properties. And they were basically shore frontage, most of them. And the rental was two to three days. So if you're looking for a vacation, if you're in the city, and you're looking for a vacation and a short-term rental is what you want to find, and you want to come to Belgrade, which is a nice tourist area. If you want to invest anywhere from $250 a day to whatever, $1,000 a day, depending on the property, you can find something online. Now, that means that there's a business that exists, in some cases, without any licensing, without any taxes. And uses are beginning to change. And I think that the town really needs to look into with this. The reason that I brought it up is because one property on our road, 844 square feet in the building, 6,000 square feet on the land, the smallest lot on the road, sold for $360,000 in April. And then it rented 20 to 24 times. At roughly $200 a night or more, depending on the time of year. Now, without regulations, without licensing, without taxes, the municipality is losing money and losing control. And not only that, since we're the last property on the road, we get a lot of turnarounds in our driveway. I'm the road manager, have been for 10 years, and I can only guess how much we might be spending in gravel to fill potholes and raiding and whatever. That my seasonal use for that property invoice will not even come close to covering. And there's no way that I can change the use of it, because it doesn't exist, believe it or not. There is no commercial designation for it. So I'm thinking that the town needs to create something in a code to determine short-term use, whether it's Airbnb. There's all kinds of ways to describe it. V R O B, vacation rental online, or buy owner, I guess it wasn't one time, but it's now online. All kinds of ways that people are looking to get short-term rentals, two days, three days. Now, I, I submitted in my documentation a couple of licenses or codes town of Kennesawport and Cape Elizabeth, that had developed short-term rental regulations for their zoning ordinances. And they mean all of the regulations that you would want to look for. They have a purpose of statement. They have clear definitions. They have terminology on what it would cost, what is license name, name it, it's all in there. So I'm suggesting that the select board assign the task, I guess, to the planning board, that they create land use ordinances to cover this, because the town is going to be caught up in what is happening not only in Maine, vacation land, you want to call it, but everywhere. Especially in high-density population areas like cities, but definitely in vacation areas. So that, I want to show you something that I'm going to do anyways, but it does sort of cover things despite the fact that I don't have to get a permit to do it, because we're, we're not just built from our main road. Here is the sign at the end of our road. Basically says it's a private road, dead end. Basically says it's a private road, dead end, caution, slow. Now you can see there's a speed limit sign off to the left. Well, I was able, able to add other speed limit signs. So my thought is I'm going to take that slow children that play and move it to where that speed limit sign. And then take the space that's occupied by these two signs and replace it with one sign. The sign that looks like this. That covers the main aspect, which is a private road. If it's a private road, it's a private entity that can regulate itself. We don't have a landowner association, but I'll tell you, because of this one property, I'm sure that if I take a vote, we will have an association shortly. So it's um, one of those things that uh, the town can't regulate my road as a road, but it certainly can regulate the lane. And so that's what I'm asking.
Greg, you want to pick your one?
Yeah. Well, I've heard it as a long-time standing tradition of renting camps and renting all these properties, so. Uh, as far as the policing, taking care of this stuff, I mean, it'd be a nightmare. And not only that, you're going against the longstanding tradition of the town. I mean, we get regulated, regulated, regulated. And he made a good point. They can take care of it by an association. So they can take care of it themselves if they have a problem, rather than bringing that to the town and having the town take care of that. You know, this, it's just, you know, we want people to come and have a good, we want a lot of the tourists to come during the summer months and, and you know, somebody have a renter. Who wouldn't want to have a rent on Great Park or Long Park or any of these towns? It just, we have no zone. So, you know, whatever he presented, I didn't see it um, as far as zoning goes. But it's the longstanding tradition for renting camps. I don't see, and the members of the planning board feel the same way.
The other thing you gotta look at is our biggest taxes come from the people that own the properties on the waters. Now, that's my biggest customer base is the people on the water. And the biggest portion of our customer base are short, or what they call short-time rentals or rentals. And that's, and you can go up to the center for all season and look at the history on the wall of pictures. And that is of camps being rented to people from away. And that's what this town is known for. And if you're gonna start taking more ordinances and limiting it to people that own these properties and saying they can't rent them, or making the restrictions so bad so they can't rent them, then you're, you're taking everything away from what Belgrade is. That is what Belgrade is. That's in the historial of this town, has been since the start of this town, and I don't think we should be interfering.
Uh, as a long-term owner at Woodland Camps and Warrant Road on Raypon, um, we've done rentals. Everybody in our association has done rentals. But we do police our rentals. We don't have two to three-day rentals for the most part. Most of them have been a week or more. Um, it's a private road. Again, um, you know, we, we end up paying for people that allow living down there year-round. Uh, but our association, when that was put in, it said it is only seasonal. We cannot live down there year-round. So we're policing ourselves. Um, I don't know that we need to, a lot of people rent out of rental companies. Maybe there needs to be more overseeing on some of that, but I, you can't take away rentals. Uh, we should have the right to rent to whoever we want to rent to.
So one of the things I don't know if you all got through the information that was here, um, some of Mr. Lassar's information that we pulled together was very, certainly ran the gamut from being very restrictive to being more like, you need to come up with a town, that I think one of them was like a hundred dollars. And essentially it was, this is your property, this is your intention, so that there could potentially be some fallout. So.
Once again, it's another tax.
Yeah, and the key word is this is your property.
Right.
No one else's.
So that's why I'm kind of looking, you know, just at, you know, some are super restrictive, like you can only rent one time per year. And I know from, you know, folks in the Belgrade area that I've spoken to about it have said, our whole family, you know, we live here year-round, but we move out for a month in the summertime because we pay our taxes by renting this for a month in the summertime. So I've had folks say it's cheaper for me to stay in a hotel for that month and go under the rental income because otherwise we might not be able to afford the taxes to stay in a lakefront home. So definitely see both sides of it, but then I see the, the neighbors and they have a rental property there.
That's part of it.
Twenty-four times.
Right. Well, the neighbor of that particular property, um, if you've got a commercial property next door to yours and you have a lakefront property, does that increase or decrease your property value? I think it will decrease it unless you want to also use yours in a commercial sense. They have a nice summer home. And the, the typical usage, you talk about what has been in the past. In the past, as you mentioned, cottages have rented out for four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks. And they pay the taxes with that money. Now you're going to gain uh, income from that. That little piece of property that sold 844 square feet to better probably, uh, I don't know, you know, I mean, if you're getting $600 for three days and you're going to do that twice a week, you're going to turn that into a profit venture, especially if you live in Florida. I mean, it's not like you're going to use it. You might use it in a ball. Uh, but uh, it's not to pay, to just pay the taxes. And in fact, land use regulations, the fact of the lack of zoning, land use regulations on a 600 square foot property that only has 59 feet of lake frontage, how can you not put a, a land use regulation on that type of property because regulations by planning boards should be the plan for today and in the future, not what happened in the past. The past is gone and we're changing. And by the time you figure it out, it'll be too late. That's, you know.
Now, I'm just going to throw a fly into the light. Just um, was just thinking about a place where my daughters and I would rent in the summertime. And we, it couldn't be advertised as a rental because where they, where the property was, if it was residential, the property tax was one thing, but if it was rented at all in the summertime, then there was an uptick in the property taxes because now it was not strictly residential, it was both residential and commercial. So I guess something would be worth considering, I was going to figure tonight, but if, you know, would there be something for the planning board to say if it's rented for more than four weeks out of the year to non-family, does that, you know, does it trigger anything different? So maybe not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater and nobody can rent your personal property because I don't think, I don't think that's, that's what we're looking at, but I think you're looking to see if there's any, you know, any regulations, any considerations that could be put in place that would allow, you know, I guess a little bit more observation, you know.
When they can do that themselves, so why we, why we take them out as a town?
I guess, well, yeah, I look at it as, and you know, my history was, when we bought our cottage 30 years ago, we rented that out almost as much as we could because we couldn't afford it basically. And as the years went by, you know, currently we don't rent it at all. And I think in general, you'll find that Belgrade has fewer rental properties today than it did 30 years ago. But uh, someone may disagree with me. The other thing is whether the owner's occupying it or a renter's occupying it, unless that, unless you're getting increased noise or disturbances, I don't see where it's the concern of the neighbor. I mean, it's, the same rules should apply whether it's a renter or the owner being a narcissist or what.
Well, I'm thinking of your B and Bs that I've touched all over the place. You've got a pretty strict set of rules from the property owner that says quiet after 10 o'clock. This is a locked building. You have to identify yourself this way. You know, you have your list of rules when you go in and if you violate it, they, they themselves will penalize you.
It's the same way with rentals because like if you rent and you go through the rental agencies, you get a very strict and it, and you, and even on the wall, you know, when you walk in, there's a, there's a pamphlet of the rules and they have very strict rules, you know. No open burning, no, you know, no noise after such and such time of day, you know, it, they're very, very strict rules, most of them.
And there are all these camps that are rented, but they'd all be grandfathered. I mean, you can't tell them they can't do it. They're not the grandfather. So.
Melanie?
At least it would be. What other people can do to take care of it themselves. There's sheriffs around if they're loud. There's associations that could be made.
Um, I, I guess my experience with short-term rentals is when um, it gets into the daily or two or three days at a time and people coming and going and um, you may have a two-bedroom camp and you've got 12 people there because it's a, a family event. But, you know, rentals is what this, a lot of this town was built on. And if you, the only, the only thing I could, I guess I could feel at this point, the planning board looking at is you can rent for two days, but you can't rent more than, you know, to one person within a week or whatever. So you're not getting the daily rental, which is that turnover, which is where I've seen it blow up in other places is it's that, when it's almost like a hotel. But um, rentals are what, you know, I want to say built a lot of this town is. And, you know, most of them, I would say, are probably weekly rentals and um, you know, that's just sort of the way it is. And I see, and we're trying to get people to come here and spend their money here and eventually buy and eventually stay two weeks or four weeks. I would have a hard time supporting anything other than looking at that turnover on, you know, renting it every two days. That I could see maybe an argument for that piece of it only.
But there's a, a few places that do that. There's a justifying ordinance for everybody. There's a justifying, man, I'm going to have to spend all that time creating a legal ordinance for stuff that can be policed by the residents themselves.
If you have a property that was purchased by an investor, let's put it that way, who is uh, mainly getting a rental uh, fee for the money that he invested. And he doesn't really care what happens. And there are no regulations in town indicating how many people will live in a square footage or two-bedroom or whatever it is. In this particular property, the reason that I came forward, and I used to be on a zoning board, I live in Augusta, so I understand what uh, laws are, land use regulations and how they are applied to, to, to uses. If regulations exist, then you can prevent the renter from crossing over onto somebody else's property. Like in this particular case, two or three children taking their dog to do his number on somebody else's property. That's just one event. Uh, I mean, the idea of having uh, posted regulations, that's great. But who makes up the regulations? And I think it, it's the town that should do it.
So, just one thing, we walked down the village and there's dog poop everywhere. It just doesn't happen.
Yeah, I'm saying it happens when people walking down my road with their dog. It's a reason they're walking the dog is to take your dogs to places.
Some of the stuff that's got to be dealt with, um, without an ordinance. Not everybody picks up the dog poop. I see it everywhere.
Now, one of the, instead of the draw-out policy, if there's a notification of the town, if you intend to rent your property to someone who doesn't live there, would that be a hindrance if it was simply a, you know?
So what are you going to gain?
Um, I guess mostly it would be, you know, if they're like Carol Johnson, it's put her place up and says, you know, she's going to allow short-term rentals. And then there's a complaint. Do you go right down to Carol and take her down when she comes back into town, or does the owners of the issue go back to the renter? So the property owner would be ultimately responsible. But would it make sense to have something that says these 125 or 500 properties in town uh, have made notice that they're going to be available for short-term rentals? So, and you know, and we are rural and not everybody knows your neighbors or, you know, and if properties change hands, maybe you don't know who to go to. So if there's a loud neighbor or somebody's there, you can go to the town and say, you know, this piece of property, who I, who I talk to about it? I don't know, we're just bouncing ideas.
I just think you're going to make a wicked nightmare for the, for, for this office, for one. Because, you know, for one, we don't go full-time to force an officer to, to police all this. And I don't, this town's not ready for that. I don't believe. Two, you're going to put an awful big burden on to the planning board. And three, I don't think you'll ever get it through the votes. Um, this town, I, like I said, it's, you know, even the people that's moved in, this town's history is rentals. That's what this town is, rentals.
It's a tourist destination.
You know, and you know.
Same shit after someplace to go.
Right. And, you know, once again, as it was stated earlier, you know, you guys as a board are voted by us citizens, you know? And when we all start discussing stuff, you guys as a board should start listening a little bit to us. And yes, maybe somehow persuade you guys to vote one way or the other by a big amount of citizen speaking. That's the, the whole, you know, that's all part of government is, you know, listen to your neighbor or listen to the citizens and make a decision on the majority. That's, that's how I take it anyways.
Well, I think that's what we're doing here because.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good to be aware of the issue. Um, and I think it's something that we can keep our eyes and ears on. You know, particularly next summer and, you know, crack up people that are, you see. I, I'm not feeling ready to do anything more at this point than just, you know, thank Paul for bringing the issue to our attention and making us aware.
I'll install the sign and tell everyone that.
I put a couple cameras on too. I'm all for video evidence and stuff.
I thought of the parents and tell them to keep the kids and their dog off the property. I might bring them to that later.
I'm sorry, I think you forgot this. Alright, does anybody else have anything I'd like to add to this assessment? Seeing none, thank you. Sounds a good idea. Alright, moving on, we have, we just. All right, moving on, we have a discussion and consideration of someone used fire truck and firefighting.
Yeah, so, so the fire chief is engaged in some training tonight to not be here. But essentially what they're asking you to do is sell some surplus equipment. Most notably, the old tank truck sixty-five. And as you guys are aware, uh, earlier this year, we acquired a new tank truck to replace that thirty-plus-year-old piece of the equipment. And so um, Dan tells me that in the past, that has been advertised for sale mainly through the main municipal association, but through other means as well to, to recoup some of the cost of that. And we do actually have a perpetuity article that was passed in two thousand and twenty that speaks to this very, very thing. And so the proceeds of that would come back into the fire department's capital equipment or equipment capital reserve fund. So, so basically what we're, we're seeking to, tonight is simply your authorization to advertise uh, for sale designs.
I'll make that motion. All right, is there any further discussion on the side? Same, Ricky, what's your pleasure?
Yes.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
All right, yes, this.
I think there's already a policy anyways.
There's a perpetuity, I think it was, that allows them to sell the property.
That's correct. Yeah, voters approved the perpetuity article in two thousand and twenty.
I think there was one before that too.
That's right, Rick. The, the one in two thousand and twenty was sort of recrafted uh, to add some additional language to it.
All right, next up, we have town warrant. Take a motion to open that item. Okay, we're talking about warrant number one hundred and thirty-seven. The amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and three cents.
I'll make that motion.
Move in a second. Let's open for discussion. I don't have anything. Anybody else have anything? Did you say anything, Rob? Or should we approve the warrant as presented? Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Barbara? Yes, Ricky?
Yes.
Five, yeses. All right, next up, we have the town manager's report.
Yeah, so the report tonight, I did not write a written report because I didn't have anything to say at the time that I put the package together. But I do now. And so just a reminder that tomorrow evening, there is gonna be an informational meeting about a proposed solar development on Route Eight and Eleventh. That begins at six o'clock at the Center for All Seasons. I do plan on attending and for those of you who aren't there, I'll send you a, a, a report on Thursday, just sort of detailing what the discussion is. And, and to be clear, that developer has not submitted an application to the town. We're still under the effect of the moratorium. And so this is part of a process for apparently trying to earn DEP approval for what it is that they're, that they're trying to do. Uh, the holiday stroll is back this year. It will occur on December the fourth from four to seven P M. And uh, just so you're aware, I anticipate on our next warrant, uh, we will have the REITs that were budgeted this year as part of the warrant. Those have been, those have been for it. Uh, we had a good road committee meeting uh, last week. Jack was part of that, that meeting. We got some great help from the local road center from Maine Department of Transportation. And uh, I had a chance to visit with, uh, pick the brain of the public works director, Dean Gardner. And so they've really helped us out on estimating costs. So uh, the road committee's gonna meet again on December the first and then we'll bring a recommendation to you for a paving project on December the seventh. The public works director also suggested a half dozen contractors that he usually sends his RFPs to. So that was good to learn. On Thursday night, the planning board, with Craig and his gang, will continue working on the subdivision ordinance that is this close to being finished. And uh, and will continue to work on the commercial development review ordinance. They've got a lot of work done on the decommissioning language for the, uh, for solar farms and, and wind turbines and for telecommunications. So it's just a matter of sort of ticking through some of those, uh, those issues. And lastly, um, maybe before the night of work, we need, we can come to an agreement on when we want to call a, a budget workshop with the, uh, with the budget committee so we can start plowing through the budget. So maybe that first full week of December, but Dan, you're gonna be gone on the eighth, is it?
Yeah.
I leave the eighth.
Okay.
Ricky, are you here for the month of December?
Whatever.
So Christmas Eve works for you?
Sure does.
The Grinch, he would love it.
I'll be back. I could do Christmas Eve. So the eighth and the eleventh, so the third week in December is out the one that's out then for folks. I'm after the eighth, from the eighth to the eighteenth.
So, so how would you folks feel about December the fifth?
Work with Sunday, December fifth work for you?
It's way too early.
You didn't say eight A M. You couldn't say eight A M.
Let's make it work. Should be able to kick it out in a half a day.
Does December fifth work for you? Is that a Sunday?
It is.
Yeah. I mean, I'm usually in church for forty-five minutes at times, so.
What time?
Well, nine-thirty to ten-fifteen, but you know.
Cause we've done some, there have been some years that we've moved the meeting a little bit later on Sunday mornings to accommodate the folks to be able to go to church. So if we were to start at eleven, would that work?
Ten-thirty would work.
Ten-thirty would work. Well, maybe everybody isn't going to church. Well, you could come to my church today by ten-thirty, be here by ten-thirty. So if we were to say eleven A M. on Sunday, December fifth for the budget review with the select board, does that work for everyone?
Brunch? Ooh, be here for lunch. Mimosas or? An omelet bar?
I can bring my waffle maker, it's kind of cool. All right, so eleven A M. and we'll figure out refreshments later.
Yes.
And then I'll be here.
It will be here at the town office. And that's the end of the town manager's report.
I did one thing I just wanted to check with Anthony. In that, did you, I had checked with Anthony to see maybe Jason's thoughts were about putting some sort of reflector on the Minnehill sign at the end of the road.
Yes, so I.
That hill is gone.
Yeah, so, and I just, and I drove by the other day.
Yeah, you got the same lookers.
And, and so are you talking about like a reflector just on the, the, the street sign that says Minnehill Road?
Something on the actual Minnehill Road post that calls that post to attention.
Okay.
Like either with the reflective thing that goes this way that shows people.
Yeah.
There's not a hill there to stop them anymore.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I needed clarification from you. I drove by that and I wanted to make sure.
Couple of the diamond reflectors, just something there that, cause there's no street light that really shows that corner. I think historically, we've all known that turns right from the hill. I see, I've seen it several times where people all of a sudden are like, oh! And I'm like, ooh, that's gonna be, this one, that could be bad. So legally, we can put that up there, so what are those thoughts on that? So, so did Jason, or did you just want?
No, no, I needed, I, I meant to speak to you about that just to get some clarification. So I'll talk to Jason about it more.
All right, so I will take the motion to untable the discussion and consideration of a public water system. So, once again, I'm just gonna read what I said earlier. The select board typically allows public comment and most agenda items, it's not required unless we're engaged in a public camp. The site of support of the select board members engaged in a focused conversation with one another of representatives of the DOT. There will be opportunities for public comment offered though at a future date. We appreciate patience and consideration. Jack Sutton was however, on the solo remediation committee earlier. So if there is the pleasure of the board, if Jack has something that he needs to add, show him with that permission. favor Ricky? Rick, is it okay with you if Jack speaks if he has anything to add?
Oh. Yeah, I only heard a little bit of it. It's crazy. I don't know.
The conversation with DOT and the select board wasn't gonna be open to public comment but because Jack Sutton is here and he was part of the original committee, is it okay with you if Jack has anything to add? If we allow him to speak?
I only got half of it then. It, it sounds like you're miles away. And I've got this cranked up, I've had headphones on. I got other messages saying it's terrible, so.
I've got a couple of them as well. So I think what we may want to do is after this meeting, see if the sound system that we were going to use previously, if we can use that maybe during the meeting, maybe have microphones or something if that'll interfere with the meeting hour, but something that we can project our voices better.
Yes, that would help, definitely. But like Anthony's really loud, but you guys down front sound like you're miles away.
Well, we are kind of, we are kind of far from the, from the speaker today.
So, so when we rearrange the room back to where it was, we'll make sure that the meeting hour is flush up against the board table.
Even before, even before this meeting, it was, was not good. But they need microphones down front so that people can hear them.
And can you have two meeting hours?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know.
I wonder if we have more than one meeting hour.
I think if you just had a microphone down front, you could hear you. All right, tell me the question again you just asked.
Can Jack talk?
Can Jack talk if we need him to?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Carol? Yes, Dan?
Yes.
All right, pardon me, I said, Jack, you can speak if you've got anything to say.
Just regroup.
All right, so. Do I thank you for staying? I know it's gonna be drawing. Sure you don't want a water?
No.
Something stronger. All right, so. Here's, so here's the school. We've got a solid water contamination issue on the table. We've been working with DOT and DOT has been working and citizens are working with us to try to come up with and determine how we can possibly move through. The main item on the table is the construction of a public water supply that would serve the households that have been previously identified as having contaminated floors. So. I don't know, what's the best way for us to do this? We don't want to need this all the way there. That's a lot. Wait, did you want to start? Cause you, you kind of came in, you know, you have an idea of how to move forward.
Uh, I, I think, you know, the department certainly is, is interested in continuing efforts and collaborating with the, with Belgrade in solving this problematic issue in the triangle, we call it, there are thirteen properties that are impacted. Also included is the town office. We, uh, we designed a, or we have a system uh, permitting for water supply. We are waiting for the agreement to be finalized so we can then move forward with our design. If you look at the legislation that was recently passed this past summer, uh, it was a governor's bill put forward that essentially acknowledged the creation of a Belgrade Water District. Uh, to my understanding, there's a three-year time window on that. And so if you start looking and, and reverse timeframeing that to, that three years, you know, we've got about two years, eight months left in the year now. We know the design is gonna take six, eight months. So you can see we're, we're pushing up against that, that window. One of the questions we had, we wanted, I know, I know you haven't done the design, but we wanted some kind of general design to have somebody look at. So. I know that was one of the things that.
What do you mean by a general design?
Well, we wanted something that was for rural water, people to look at.
Right.
So what it was gonna cost, this design, what it was gonna cost us to run it. Well, we did put together a preliminary hydrogeologic report and I think there was a subsequent document as well that was submitted that the town both, you have access to.
What we got was like, like an appendix A and with what we got, our local documents, there weren't any additional. None of those documents were, were attached.
All hydrogeologic reports are with Anthony.
Yeah, and she's talking about the contract law. So, so.
Agreement?
Yes.
So not the agreement, what we were talking about is like, we took it upon ourselves to go to the town review and have them walk us through their public water supply system. Because without even a hand-drawn draft, me from where I was sitting had no idea what a public water supply would look like. You picture something much bigger and more dramatic than it is. And so what we were looking for was the conceptual drawing of what it would look like for the town of Belgrade.
So. That's summarized in the rates of engineering hydrogeologic report from twenty twenty. There are two options that show the distribution lines from, uh, from the source well.
We didn't get that.
It's, it's with the town.
Anthony's eyebrows, Anthony's eyebrows are telling me different.
You guys paid for it. You paid taxes.
Yeah, I have to go back through my files. I mean, it's, it's been a long time since I, since I.
Just cause we paid her, it was deeply sorrow.
I laid eyes on my.
I, I, I know, I sent it. I sent it multiple times.
But, but, uh, and, and Kirsten Abear from the Main Rural Water Association is joining us on the Zoom uh, call. And the Main Rural Water Association has agreed to look at the design on our behalf once the design is, is complete. So Kirsten, am I, am I saying that correctly?
That, that is something we have offered to do, certainly be happy to.
And the department is very interested in moving forward the design once we have an agreement.
Just to bring me up to speed, am I, am I correct that? It sounds to me like you're wanting us to, to have an agreement before you spend all the money and design. And we're wanting to have some idea from you of what it's going to be before we enter into an agreement. Is that where we're at? Yes, and so it sounds like we're chicken and egg-ing and I don't, I don't know how to get around that.
Again, I'll, I'll refer back to the twenty twenty-four. They outlined the two-point-two million dollars. It was a, it was a very specific breakdown of those costs. It showed the distribution line. We provided a summary of the permitting of process and D H S for the drinking program. It, it's a, it's a report that I, I can submit to you in an hour or when I get back to my office.
I would love that.
I know, I, I know you have it previously. I mean, you, we have submitted invoices to you to cover those costs. So all that, all that information is, is readily available. Then Jackson.
Not that I recall, what I've made.
Dwight, I'm telling you, I've searched those seven different ways and all of my town media.
So, 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 so we'll, we'll get it. We'll get it. And I'll, I'll, when I, when we're done with the meeting, I'll go look in my office to see if I can find it. And if, I'm sure I have it from Dwight and then we can, did it come directly from you Dwight?
Yeah.
Okay. So I kept all my emails from Dwight.
I mean, all that information is there and that's what we base the cost estimate on. And the, the values that are incorporated into that agreement were teased out of that report. We actually had Ramsey go back and revisit the original cost estimate to update it, to make sure these costs were, were, were up to date.
Well, then I apologize Dwight, because we didn't, we don't have a copy of it. I don't have a copy of it. This, this package is everything that I have on the discussions that we've had and what I received on it. Because I keep it together so it doesn't get misplaced. And that was one of the questions that we had, was what it would look like. And what we were told is that we can't tell you what it would look like until there is an agreement and then we will design it. So if they're, and, and, and I remember saying, this, if this is not the first one that's designed, you know, it's not the first one, I'm sure. So is there something that we can look at? That would give us an idea of what we're, what the concept is. And what we ended up doing was making an appointment with the town of Rio on our own and having them walk us through the air system so that we could have an idea of what it would look like. So I do apologize to that, but I've gone all the way back to the end of a lot of years. There isn't anything that I can hold pinpoint. So I'm sorry about that. So we do have the governor's permission to set up, so there were two pieces. We had to have legislative approval to set up a water district and that is done now. One of the biggest concerns has been that we don't have a Plan B. So if this water supply fails or doesn't yield over time the amount that we needed to, what is, what do we have as a backup? Well, we haven't had a great, you know, we've tried a couple of things and they, they didn't pan out. One of the things that we were trying to do is take this property. Carol, now is probably a good time if you, do you want to?
Yeah, for that point maybe. So, just as a little background, I was trying to come up to speed on this and, and talking with Melanie realized that we, apparently there isn't a Plan B, which really, I guess is unsettling is, let's say we move forward, we agree to all of this, we put the system in and then something fails. And there, what do we do then? Or how long is the system good for? In 30 years, do we have to have enough capital expense to repair it or replace it or whatever? And then the third one is if this continues to leach and we engage in more properties, then what do we do? So, and, and bear with me, because this is a little, I sometimes think out of the box and I may be way out of the box at this point. But I got thinking about two or three things that, that Melanie had, when we were talking, said, we don't want people to have to move out of Belgrade. You know, we can, can we buy the property? And, but if we pay fair market value, they're probably not going to be able to continue to live in Belgrade or put themselves into a new house or do something else. And I didn't realize that there was what I call as much money on the table. So if the state's willing to put 2.2 into a plan and some other, you know, 50,000 here and 100 here as you connected and do those others. So in my head, I'm just saying two and a half million. Pick a number. I think we need to continue to look at the system and, and get the pieces to it. But I also sort of want to look at it as sort of an intensive study of what would happen if the town found a piece of land or two pieces of land that the town developed, put in the septic, put in the well, found new modular homes or mobile homes or, or whatever. I mean, as we look at those folks that we, and we found a place in Belgrade, so no one has to leave Belgrade. We put in a system that is going to make everyone whole. At the end of the day, we, they, the property gets deeded back to the town. We walk away clear, the state walks away, other than if some future things happen. And then the land, most of it is around the triangle here. Perhaps some of that land can be put into parks and maybe some of it can go to have the new fire station. I know they're looking at, could we identify some of that cost? And put it into making a real center here in what is the center of town? And for some folks, when we're offering fair market value, that's not going to be an acceptable piece to them. But, so let's say there are 10 houses and you've got 200 to 2.5 million. Let's say we offer $150,000 or we'll relocate you to this piece of property that's been identified that has all new everything. So, some people might say, you know what, I'd rather just take the 150,000 you were going to spend to put me here. And I'll sign over my property and walk away because we're paying over fair market value. And there are a lot of pieces to go into all this. I'm just looking conceptually. And I know there are a couple of businesses that we would have to look at. But it would seem to me if there's that much money on the table, we should be able to find a way that gets the state off the hook so they can walk away, gets us where we need to be. Some of the cost of the new fire department would be supplemented. However, we take, you know, money out of one pocket and put it in another. And maybe that's a viable solution to this, because I don't like not having a Plan B. And if we could do, figure out a way to walk away from this, I think as a town, we're better served. We're not looking at future, I mean, just all sorts of pieces and looking to pay cost in perpetuity because it just is, I'd love to find a way not to do it. So that's sort of my out of the box piece that I don't think we've looked at it from that perspective. And, but we got a committee of six or eight people together, agree to meet every week or twice a week or whatever we have to do over the next month and see, are any, is this realistic at all? Is there any possible way to make this happen? At the same point, continuing to work on this, because this may be where we end up. So that's, that's my out of the box thought for the day.
I thought it was, I was like, we've not thought that. We've thought, purchase their properties. You know, what do we do if folks don't agree to sign on to the water system? What if? You know, then, then what happens? We don't really have a solid end cost, because we don't know, you know, what it's going to cost. I think we were talking about possibly getting an estimate from D O T as far as replacing appliances. But then it goes into appliances, piping, you know, there's a whole bunch of other pieces to that. And so when Carol suggested this, I thought, no, we were, we were looking for some, some additional input. And so I was happy to entertain that on the table as an option. You know, folks think, because that was one of our concerns is that if you had a mobile home and they offer you fair market value and, you know, we say 60,000 is what its assessed value is at, is there any place in Belgrade where you could build a modest home for their well and septic and a driveway? That's 60,000, 80,000, I don't know. So.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be paying way over fair market value. But it might be enough of an incentive for some people to make some other plans, whatever they're planning to do. Or we have a development that we're going development. We have a six houses, eight houses, two sets of four houses, wherever that is going to be new, make them whole. Where we, the end cost would be more than fair market value, but at fair market value, it's not, it's not fair. So we have to look at another way of looking at that.
Well, I can see with something like that, even with a module all nowadays. By the time you buy the land, you put it in the utilities, you put in the septic, you put in the water, you put the house on there, the foundation. You're probably talking $300,000 now. You have to do that 13 times.
That sounds like a lot. I mean, I'm, and I'm saying is to look, you know, we're looking at in a development, could we do that? And I don't, do all these places have foundations?
Yeah. Frost wall, you know, they don't hold a full foundation, but that.
Well, the modular ones don't have a foundation.
Yeah.
Your mobile ones, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you throw them all slide.
So it's just looking at, is there a way we can toss that out that would make sense? I, I don't know, but it means sitting down and doing some research.
I think we did look at that already. Property values, I actually went from legal office to the town. I think the decision was made at that time. It was cost prohibitive. There was also some indication that real property owners are unwilling to sell. And it was also leaders in the department ensuring that those properties remain on the tax rolls for the time.
So, did it work?
We actually made an offer to one property owner. And if we went through the fair market value process, the department cannot pay more than fair market value by state sanction. And we were unsuccessful in completing that transaction.
And that was before the town got involved, because I remember saying, we can negotiate that for when we are the hook for half.
No, the town, the town wasn't involved with that.
So, and was it because they didn't want to move from that property? They didn't want to move out of Belgrade?
Oh, no, not, I don't, I don't, I can't get into the weeds on the decision-making process. But keep in mind, we're not just talking about all modular homes up there. There, there are historic farmhouses, some of the historic properties and that you have several businesses with this facility. I think it's important to understand that this has been going on since 2016. Working with the community for the last three years, we've certainly gone through and vetted many different options. And we've concluded that this is the most viable move forward.
But there's no backup, am I right? I mean, if something happens to that vein, does, do I have the right terminology? Then what happens?
Fracture, right? There, there's no guarantee in a lot of things. I mean, that's, we, we mentioned about legacy issues. I think the department has already mentioned that they would consider closing their operations at that location. Removing any salt handling in that area to ensure the protection of that water source. We would also strongly encourage that the town consider that as well.
We have, I think we said that before. The 1035 is not a priority anymore. The ones that we were using as test ones, those were not.
Before the salt storage. Salt storage.
But we were also saying part of your great need to be that we would not continue in the triangle to make it salt priority. Because then the way adding fuel to the fire. As far as spreading salt, right? Because it was a straight salt.
And I think there's been discussions that the department is interested in. And then the town, it's so, so desired to assume responsibility for maintenance in the roads in that area.
When we pose that to our current contractor, the client invitation.
Yes, we were trying to, you know, end up with that garage building. I don't think it's going to happen.
Questions? I, I had a question concerning the capability of the system to add on additional properties if there are future properties that become identified. If the salt does move into other properties or properties that are, at this point, developed. How, how large the system, how, how large a, what, what number of properties the system would be able to accommodate?
The, the well itself is a strong yield, over 50 gallons a minute. So the well is just, you just don't consider the well as a salt source. The treatment system as well as the storage capacity is internal to the system. It was important. So you would have the well at 50 gallons a minute and then you could add storage capacity, temporary storage capacity to accommodate any spikes in consumption. And so it, it's not so much the source itself, it's how much capacity you have, you have in a storage building for additional storage.
So if there are additional properties five, 10 years from now that do have the same salt incursion, then we wouldn't be able to accommodate them?
Yes, but I would also encourage that serious consideration be given to, to the protection of that wall head up there and elimination of salt storage in that area be considered.
We talked about elimination, getting the property, you know, handled and so that that was.
And the main, and the Main Rural Water Association has also agreed to do a, a source well protection plan for the, essentially the perimeter around that well.
If it doesn't need to be required by. If we have to end up moving that salt signature, who would we contact? I want to find out from somebody where they recommend, but I don't want to just say, oh, let's come over here. We, we're going to have to hold that. We're going to have to have someone come in that can do the testing. Find a location that's going to be as safe as possible. We don't want to move this problem to somewhere else and stack all the other problems somewhere else. So that's something else we consider as part of this, if we're going to have a vacancy in that area. So. Salt was a legacy issue. We've been around the rest. I'm at a point where I'm full of this. There are some questions in the language. Some of the, I had some of the same questions that I think Anthony's brought on business now. We need to have Iowa or, or water look at it and, and come back with some suggestions on how to answer some of these questions. I'm not a legal lawyer.
I, I thank you, Dan. I'm not an attorney. I don't even want to try to play one. But I, I know the feedback I get from our legal office is they would welcome the opportunity to talk with our legal counsel to help move this.
And I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure this is tweaking the language. We just want to make sure, I know main concern is if more properties contaminated, is a state, if we have to expand this thing, is a state still going to be on the hook for at least 50% of expansion? And, and they're holding up these new properties. I know, that's, that's one of the big questions, because we don't want the state to build it and then walk away and say, no, we're not responsible for it anymore. We understand we've got to run it. But if something else happens, you know, from this original contamination, we just want to make sure when if other ones just left on the board.
Certainly, the department is, is concerned about the future, but we also know we've got to deal with, with, with that hand right now.
Right.
And so we don't want to overthink this.
And so we don't want to overthink this. We want to get something in and resolve these thirteen issues if we can. Understanding that some, some of the problems may crop up in the future, but I think continue to collaborate together and work on this. The department has put forth saying that if we do move out of the, of that area, we no longer have any salt storage up there. There is some interest for us to have some type of sunset time. Where, where after five or ten years, we're not storing salt there, we're not seeing any more well claims. Should we still be responsible for hanging there?
But if we move out too. Then, if you, you know, somewhere down the road, there's still gonna be quite, quite a whole size. If we both, if we agree to do this and move out of the same, basically do the same thing, you know, we're not gonna be any more responsible, stay with the.
But I think in that case, there, you know, I, I, I think, think back to my undergrad years, no solid problem, eliminate it. If you eliminate salt storage up in there, that, that probably shouldn't care a way.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a matter of thought.
Yeah, so I do feel like if we're gonna have the attorneys. Have a conversation, I'd like to see an executive session with a select board present. Especially Dan and myself, because my coffee's a well-marked out. Kind of annual, some questions we've had answered, some we haven't, some we wonder about the legality. You know, some of the language, like if the claim is determined. Investigation of new claims, if the claim was determined by DOT, we associated with groundwater contamination impacts. The municipality should be showing the impact of property we connected to the water system at the municipality's cost. So, you know, certain things that I get, at what point is it no longer a joint effort to control? Construction that had started, that's adjacent to that across the street by Pinewood. With the intention of putting several homes, that was one of the things I remember asking, was if new construction could potentially. Reduce. The efficacy of this public water system.
If you start putting condominiums in over there, then yes. I think we chatted about that as well, is there was even some discussion with the planning board about how to control development in that area. And so I, I, I know the town is well aware of that.
Problem is we have permitted development, that's they are, they're simply starting.
So what's the next step we're moving forward, getting the attorneys together?
Should we try to do that in a special meeting that's just devoted directly to that and happens before. Your next meeting on December the seventh, because I think in corresponding and talking with Kirsten earlier. There's sort of a two-step process here, and Kirsten, please weigh in if I misstate anything here. But the first step is, under the legislation that was passed creating the water district, the voters still need to ratify that. And that happens in a charter election, and in that legislation, it says, this is how, it's, it's to be ordered. And it must occur in a referendum election. And that needs to be a separate process from the approval of the contract, whether that's to. Yeah, but, but I think, I think the goal should be to try to get that election done at our March Town meeting. And as I corresponded with you late in the day today, one of the things that Kirsten and I talked about was if. If we have a secret ballot election for the town meeting on a Friday. We could have a special call meeting just to approve the contract on a Saturday. Or we could do that on a Saturday and it's something.
That would be separate from the March Town meeting, would be before the March Town?
No, at, at the March Town meeting, we would approve the charter. That's, that's built into the legislation, that has to be by referendum, so that has to be by secret ballot. The other can simply be a show of hands. But, but the way, and, and for those of you who don't know, Kirsten, who is the executive director of the Main Rural Water Association, is also. By training, an attorney and was formerly, formerly a practicing attorney. And so, you know, she explained that this has to be sort of a two-step process. You do this first. And then once you got this done, then you move forward with the, with the other.
Since she's willing to look at. This language that came from DOT. Do it with her. Let me get our attorney here too, and happen. Our attorney looking at it and her looking at it, can we do it with her looking at it? And then coming up with the final thing and then finally sending it to our attorney. Having too many people here at once.
Kirsten, what do you think about that?
So I want to be sure I heard you correctly. You're, you're asking if I would participate in a review of the DOT. Memorandum of agreement or, or contract such that you could then take that information to your legal counsel? Okay, I mean, I'm certainly happy to take a look at it, absolutely.
And so, Dan, are you talking about having a meeting with the DOT attorneys and having Kirsten as part of that meeting?
Yeah, because I mean, it's the other one that's, that I have to, Main Rural Water is the one that's helping us with it. And they, that's what they do is they deal, you know, attorneys are great, but they don't deal with round the water district. So the language. I would rather have somebody that deals with the water thing. Form an opinion on the language and the agreement, and then once everybody's sat aside, then we send it to our attorney and say.
So Kirsten, if you're willing to take a look at the, the journey to do that in conjunction with main DOT's. Attorneys, are you willing to take a look at that and then have our attorney and their attorney? And work together in executive session?
I would prefer to review the agreement, offer suggestions and thoughts. And if you wanted me to, to visit you and participate in that session where everybody is present. I would be happy to do that also.
That's what I agree was leading to on that. I didn't think you wanted to be totally on the hook for it. Absolutely. Let me do a legal review of that, for your thoughts.
And so Kirsten, just, I want to just make sure I did state correctly that two-step process for the, for the voter approval of this.
That, that's correct, because ultimately, while you've got legislative approval, it's, it's only an enabling act. And it's, it is not yet decreed, is not yet created until it's been voted in the affirmative by local referendum. And it's, it's my understanding from the contract, that the contract can't even begin to take place until the voters ratify. The legislation, so, so you can't even enter into the contract until the referendum is held and, and successfully held.
So what we need, Kirsten, is essentially a three-step process. The first part is for the voters to agree to the establishment of the water. The second step then is for the voters to agree to authorize the voice, the white person to enter into an agreement. With DOT for the construction of this water supply system. And then the third step is to execute the contract.
Yes, I feel, I feel like you've, you've now got your planets in alignment, yes.
And just to add on to that, I have my cheat sheet notes here, which you, the first two were spot on. Third is that once that agreement is signed, then we can move forward with the design. And then once the design, it's a six, eight month process, and then we put it up a bit. Ideally, you want to put these things up a bit this time of year. Contractors a little more hungry this time of year, trying to book work for next year, and so you get better values. Unfortunately, what we've seen over the last year or two is some significant increases in construction costs. So that two point two, I know you brought it up to two point five. Anthony and I spoke earlier. I won't sound cavalier, but you know, I use ranges of two to three million, you know, so try to be general, more general on that. I think you're gonna find it's gonna be creeping up closer to the two and a half to three million.
And we just passed that infrastructure bill.
So do we have time to get this ready to secret ballot one day and go to contract the next day with?
Yes.
Do we have time with our legal people to have it looked at?
Yes, because keep in mind, for secret ballot articles, those have to be completed by January the nineteenth.
Okay.
So we got, and, and we already know what the, what the wording of the article is. I mean, it's in the legislation, it's very simple. And then we have up until the first week of February to draft a. A warrant article for the pool or for the special town meeting. And so, and, and in fact, with the special town meeting, we only need seven days of notice.
And wouldn't necessarily have to be the following day, it could be three weeks from then.
It, it, yeah, it wouldn't have to, it wouldn't have to be. I was just thinking about just striking while the iron's hot.
Yeah. Well, and then the problem is, that was brought to our attention today, is the reason why the traditional town meeting was brought down. Was that they did not want folks to gather, but as evidenced this evening, folks didn't have an issue gathering.
Yeah. So. But, but at least this would be like tonight was, the one question, special town meeting that, as opposed to something that might last an hour or more.
So we don't think contact rates are as high for just to gather.
Well, hope, I mean, hope.
We did it tonight.
And that next one.
That, yes, exactly.
Need any kind of motion?
No, this was really just discussion and consideration, just, you know, bringing a few extra folks into the fold, but.
So, so do we want to try to set that executive session meeting? You know, see what, Kirsten, what your availability might be?
Did I just hear the date of November thirtieth?
With Tuesday, November thirtieth, would that work for you?
And what time would that be?
I can't get here before six thirty. The possibility is if we do it on a Wednesday. That probably works better for. Attorneys and, you know, all that stuff.
Need to do it earlier during the day?
Yeah.
Earlier the better, I mean, if we could do it, the attorneys and everything else at four o'clock in the afternoon on Wednesday, I don't have a problem.
December first.
What are your thoughts on December first? That's a yes for Kirsten?
Yes.
Yes.
Jack?
I'd just like to say one thing.
Four o'clock, December first, three o'clock?
I mean, I, I'll, I'll come as early as I want. If you guys are available, just put the DOT lawyers, whoever, let them decide what works best for them.
Jordan, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm available.
Well, you're kind of the star of the show, so.
I, I will certainly find out availability tomorrow. Jeff, as we're talking, the, the, December first, late afternoon for a couple of hours.
Even, even better, I mean, early afternoon.
Yeah, early the better. Better for the attorneys.
So is that gonna circle back around with brunch or lunch?
I know, I was just doing this debate, like, you know, we could just meet up. Are you, are you able to meet if we do an afternoon thing on a Wednesday?
On when?
Stay December first.
What time?
Two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock?
I don't, I, I'm not getting home till five o'clock now, so. Now, you'll be fine without me. I kind of know where I'm going with this anyways.
What does that mean? Is that like coded info?
There's, there's a lot of unanswered and still questions here. I mean, the state's gonna bail on us once, once this thing's built. You know, that's the cheapest path. We're gonna, you know, people are gonna be stuck with this thing for years. You should be part of it right straight through the whole thing, as I'm concerned, and I'm gonna push that, and I've been pushing it. Um, I just. I don't, I, this, there's something wrong here.
I think Rick should be at the.
All this. I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about the next people that are coming on, because they're gonna be stuck with it, taxpayers. Years and years and years. Is it the answer? There was a couple of questions tonight. What happens if that well goes to heck? Guess what? We're back to square one. So there's, there's a lot of stuff that's still not answered. And we can deal with it however we want, I guess.
Given with the highest, the fifteen thousand dollars a year for us, for thirty years, that's only four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Still, not even close to the cost of building.
Well, when I'm looking in here, I think I was seeing like thirty six thousand.
Well, and, and that was, I think that was the OT's figures, yeah, but, but Main Rural Water Association. Kirsten, I, I recall you saying that the operating cost should probably be somewhere between nine and twelve thousand dollars a year.
I recall somewhere in that neighborhood, Anthony, I apologize, I'd have to refresh my recollection. But it, but frankly, it will be a brand new system, so it's not as if there's going to be a lot of maintenance on the infrastructure itself. It's truly a matter of just maintaining the, the day-to-day and whatever the chemical treatment process is. And if there's a, a chlorine injection, then it's a residual test and, but it, it is not insurmountable in, in that regard.
And so, and so for us, yeah, I think the, the operating cost is pretty minimal. But at the same time, we would want to build a capital reserve to address future infrastructure costs.
No, because the walls are gonna be capped.
But he brings up a good point, again, circling back around to a continuing source area, if you remove the source. Mother nature is pretty good at liberating herself, and, and within, within ten to twenty years, you'll see some declines in the chloro.
Okay, so. Five o'clock, five o'clock on the first?
Rick, with five o'clock on the first work?
Five o'clock? I'm gonna be able to do the Zoom thing, I'm not, I'm not going into any places, so.
We'll zoom you in.
Fine, let's try it. I might be on my phone for a few minutes, but then I'll get home and on my computer, unless it's stalling.
Once again, I'll, for, for me, yes, and I'll, I'll check with you. So this, the intent here is to have attorneys present, both the town attorney as well as.
Main Rural Water, water can look at that a little ahead of time, see if they can correct some language.
Alright, so five o'clock on December first. Those are all parties, Jamaica. Kirsten, would that work for you?
Am I hearing 5:00 on the first? Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Send it out, take a motion. Oh, Jack, you had something you wanted to say.
Most of the things that I had on my mind have, have already been discussed. As I said, I was on that earlier committee. I had some concerns, lingering concerns about the well and the system proposed work. I don't have a better solution. Uh, I am concerned about the continually capacity and ability to supply water. I'm concerned about the task is the potential for metastasizing the problem area. Because I don't see how it can be contained in one specific area at this specific time. That's a concern that I, that I have. Like the reef, reef field situation as a design, that's a concept that I have in my mind of not duplicated exactly, but the, the elements of it. The one thing that hasn't been discussed and may have already been considered and, and thrown out for one reason or another, is a discussion at least with the, the Augusta water concern. Of extending that line out to the Delray depot area and eliminating the need to put in a water system of our own. And I, I don't know if that's at all practical. I don't know if they were considered. I don't know if they have some other thoughts in mind about expanding in this direction anyway, that might be included in this. But I would just like to feel that there has been a reasonably up-to-date discussion with the Augusta Water District on that possibility.
I don't know. We have talked about that, Jack.
It's, it's approximately $400 a foot to run a watering.
Yeah, but they, they don't come out much past.
And I think it's a mile and a half away, closest and I, maybe even distant, more distant. Cause I think it ends at Augusta. The charter, I think for Augusta Water District ends in just Augusta. So to continue into Delray would need PNC approval and I, I, again, I'm not a, not a attorney, but.
What I have in my mind is it was done between Waterville and Oakland. They came over the hill with the water line. Shut off Augusta, uh, shut off Oakland as a separate supplier and supply by the city of Waterville.
It can be done, as I said, if it's three, you know, have three or four holes foot. It would just possibly.
Smellin, you have a handout?
Oh, Kirsten?
I read all the gas, all the gas lines that have recently been laid in the God, uh, Waterville and around the area. I don't know how much they all cost per foot to run, but it would be, i- i- it's an example of, of what has been done recently in there.
The challenge is you have to be at least four or five feet in depth for the gas lines. They're, they're only one or two feet below pavement or down surface. And they use rubber, rubberized distribution systems.
Kirsten?
As coincidence would have it, in a small town, small state, I'm a trustee on the Greater Augusta Utility District Board. Um, I, I would say, obviously I can't bind the board or speak on behalf of the board, but the Greater Augusta's charter would need to go back through the legislative process to receive permission to serve this particular community, which would, of course, we, we'd end up with the same legislative process that you're, you've been through and are about to face for, for referendum. Um, now that said, there is a regional water council that has been created among Winthrop, Augusta, Manchester, Monmouth. And the invitation has been extended to others such as Kennebec Water and, and, um, Gardner Water District. So certainly the, the conversation has started for more of a regional authority. So if, if it's something that's of interest, we could explore that with the Greater Augusta Board for the conversation. But, but certainly the price, um, won't come cheap, run in, run in pipe and, and building out that infrastructure.
All right. All right. Does anybody have anything else? All right, seeing that, I'll take a motion to a jar.
Thank you.
All those in favor, Ricky?
Yes.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
All right, five yeses. Thank you, everyone, for being here, participating and.